I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Kathleen.
McCambo.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
All right. First on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed in their Item 1 consent agenda having been discussed or considered to be routine by the city council, and they will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the usual, finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have one resolution, a resolution naming depositories for deposits for the city of Burlington, and we also have some appointments from your pro temp.
City Planning Commission Chuck Griffin, Civil Service Commission John Kemp, Human Rights Commission John Carroll, Renewable Energy Committee Keith Jacobs, Roger Guard and Michael Gorman, Riverfront Advisory Committee Matthew Rinker.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have anything removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Counsel?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1 consent agenda.
Second. Move to second. Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
I have a resolution approving the final plan of Casey's addition subdivision.
Second. ET.
This is a two lot subdivision on Des Moines Avenue, creating, again, two lots, one with frontage on Des Moines Avenue and one directly to the east of that. Show an aerial image just to get a little better idea. This is a property locally addressed of 1911 Des Moines Avenue. They are looking to, again, divide the two lots in half, the front half as opposed to Casey's and still looking at possible development on the back half, lot two of this subdivision. No public infrastructure required, so it's a minor subdivision.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns from the audience? All right. Leon's got his legs crossed. That's a good thing. Counsel?
No.
Okay. Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I have a resolution approving refund of liquor license for the Tendertrap LTD doing business as the Tendertrap LTD.
Second.
What's the deal on that? Anything that...
The license was seized by the state, and so Alcoholics Beverage Division filled out an application for a refund, and so the refund will be going to the United States Treasurer.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Okay, doing business. Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. I know you guys have been here for a long time. I appreciate your patience. This is the time where we will entertain comments from the audience. Are there any at this time? Anybody besides Leon Shayhan?
Not at this point.
But you are the cool jacket, so...
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I guess for the remainder of the meeting, I'm curious, is there going to be any public input for the work session that you're doing, or how's that going to work? Um...
No.
I can't, I can't, I can't see any reason why we...
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
Well, all right. You heard the counsel.
Then I'll make it out. When you're looking at the budget, my wife's not that far away from retirement. What you're doing with property taxes, what's happening, we're not going to be able to afford to live here. You're going to have to look at two things. How much you're spending on economic development and how much you're spending on the war on War on drugs is costing 10 to 15 percent of what we pay in property taxes. The economic development is 50 percent of our property taxes. You haven't created one living wage job yet. We've been at this for over 20 years. My wife and I, if you can't clean up your budget, my wife and I aren't going to be able to live here in retirement. It's just not going to happen. We can't do it.
Well, to give you some good news, Leon, we don't want you to leave, so we're really working on trying to, trying to take care of that, just for you, Leon, just for you.
Thank you for your comments.
Any other comments from the audience? Anybody else? Yes, sir. Dave, come on down.
I'm not going to threaten to move out of town, so we'll get that out of the way early on on this day. I am here to talk about the convention and tourism budget and just make some comments about that.
Could you state your name and your address, please?
Yeah. Dave Walker, 3001 Winegard Drive.
Thank you.
In Burlington. To start out with, the motel tax levy is one of the easiest ones to pass. You ask the citizens of Burlington whether they'd like to have everybody that lives outside of Burlington and stays in a motel, if they'd like to help pay our taxes. And so the answer is obviously yes. Then they do it to us also, so when we go out, we're supporting that. And historically, the council, every time that the state has removed the cap on the thing, has moved it up to them. So it was, for a while, 5 percent, missing now 7 percent. The intention of the law by the legislators, this goes back into the 80s, you know, is to use these funds to promote tourism so it becomes sort of a self-feeding kind of proposition. It is written in such a way that it is almost comical that there is nothing that cannot be somehow traced back to tourism. We're going to pave part of 14th Street. Well, yes, that'll make it look a lot nicer on the way to Craig Park. You know, we're going to hire a policeman. Well, that's good, because, you know, they'll be safer while they're in town. So I'm saying it does stretch itself out. However, the intent of the legislature was to use it more directly for funds than that. I would compliment former councils and current councils, former CTV people that have run that, they have tried to keep that in mind, and as they've distributed the funds over time, they have focused in not, like some communities, taking the entire amount, dump it in the general fund, and then you can play chase with the thing. So I'm not complaining about that, you know, but, you know, the trend and the growth that we've had in Burlington is up, 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 in terms of the amount of motel tax. A little bit of an aberration this year, perhaps because of the fertilizer plant type of thing, but in general, it's still been a nice upward rise. You know, my concern is if we start to deplete the funds of the Tourism Bureau, those things are going to start going the other way, and then we're going to have less funds to distribute to everybody, and that is a concern. You know, from an operator's perspective, which I guess I am, and I was one of the original members of the first tourism bureau in Burlington, you know, this reduction seems to be excessive. I wouldn't say that it shouldn't be something, but when you start churning out 30-some or 40-some percent of somebody's budget, that's it. You know, I just would ask you to remember that this is other people's money. It's yours now because they've entrusted it to you, but you have a responsibility to spend it in such a way that it would be there. And I guess from just ask the rhetorical question, doesn't it make sense to enhance the efforts of the Tourism Bureau as opposed to curtailing it? And we'll see less conventions in town, we'll see less general advertising that lets people know what's going on in Burlington, and there's been a lot of investment in things like the Recplex and things like Fun City and other things like that that, you know, I'd hate to see, you know, suffer because we're not able to promote Burlington as well as we can. So I guess that's about where I stand on the thing is, you know, I understand your job on this thing, but by the same token, that fund did not increase and increase and increase, you know, just because somebody made a magic wand appear or something like that. It's because of dedicated effort by the people there. They need those funds to continue to be promoting, and that's what we want. We want new people here and new money in town, so thank you, people.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the audience that has any comments? Okay, I see none. Mr. Frenel? Any comments before we...
No.
Counselors, any comments before we...
I want to specifically talk to Mr. Holmbraker and ask him to pass on to his snow removal crew, thank you for a wonderful job. It's impressive, I think.
Not everybody was asked what they had to say.
I am.
I would say one thing, road use tax, that there's, at a legislative level, that is an issue that is under consideration. If you've followed the articles that have been on the news, they've talked about a 10-cent increase in the gas tax. We have forwarded on a copy of our resolution along with the cover letter from the mayor to our representatives in regards to our support for seeing movement on this issue. But as you get a chance, make sure that you follow up with legislators to, just to continue to express your support for that issue. It's probably the biggest issue that's going on right now at the legislative level from a city perspective. There are some other issues, but not, none that are the same level pertinent for us at this point. And the chambers, again, is having their legislative day next week, Tuesday and Wednesday. Becky has signed up to go on that. I think that they'd be still willing to take any other council members that were able and willing to go up as part of that group.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Fleming? Close her up.
Second.
Let's move to second. Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay. If there's anybody that wants to leave, now's your opportunity. Get out of here before things get real ugly. Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen.
Have a good night.
Obviously, this is budget season, so we're going to try to finish up tonight the best that we possibly can, so let's, let's jump right in. Excuse me.
Stephanie, you want to remind us of where we are in the budget cycle?
Sure. Can I just grab out my calendar so I don't... Okay. So today is obviously February 2nd. I have on the budget calendar that we have until February 12th to meet and discuss the budget, and then on the 13th, I have to have it to Kathleen to file. Ideally, like a few days before the 13th, to get all the numbers into the file, so then it gets to the published document that needs to be given to the Hawkeye to publish. After you set the public hearing on the 17th, then we have a couple of days after that that it'll hit the paper. So is that what...
After the 17th?
For the publication, we have to have final numbers for that publication document by the 12th.
I mean, that gives me that day to get them in the...
We need, so that on the 13th, when the council packet goes out, it has this set public hearing based off of the revenues and expenditures that are anticipated in the final budget.
Ideally, a day or two before that would be great.
From that point, no increases in any budget category could be done. You could technically at the public hearing reduce an expenditure on a given line item, but you could not increase.
Okay. Well, then we need to make it happen.
Yeah, essentially, what she's trying to say is that by next Monday, we really need to be finalized in regards to how we're moving forward. You have a couple of days, you could have a special session after that, but it gets really difficult for her to get then the documents, the longer that goes to get it...
I think we'll be able to oblige.
So then after that, we set the public hearing on the 17th city council meeting, and the public hearing will be on March 2nd. We have the public hearing, and then you'll have the budget adoption at that same, in the same evening. So then I have time to get it filed to the state by the 15th of March.
From staff's perspective on where you all are at right now, the main issue that we hear on the, on the table is whether, how to fund...
A police officer.
A police officer. Outside of that, there hasn't been any major questions or concerns raised about issues, but it's out of trying to offset that additional $75,000 annual cost, coming to some level of compromise between you all is the area that still needs to be worked out.
Well, not everybody at once, but let's, let's just see...
I'll start.
Yeah, let's try to find where we, where we are all on the same page, and then we can, we can narrow it down from there.
Let me start because mine's very brief.
Okay.
On the 26th, the city manager gave us some options to look at, which I reviewed in my mind several times. There are two things in my mind. One is let's get another police officer, number two, let's not increase property taxes. With that in mind, the suggestion, number three, I find very acceptable and I'm willing to vote to support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was, that was brief, direct and to the point.
It's not like me using this, but I reserve the right to make further comparisons.
Now, that's like you. Mayor Pro Temp, would you just go down?
Well, I want another police officer, and I guess I'm kind of willing to look at whatever it takes, and I've looked at some different things, and then I go in and talk to Jim, and he tells me I can't do that, so... I guess there are, you know, a couple of things I, I would still question. I mean, I agree with everything in number two, but I don't agree with everything in number three, and I wish we had some other options. And as I said the last time, I'd want to look at maybe the self-insured funds to reduce that by 25,000, or I guess I'm wondering about our contingency fund. Do we need that full amount that we have in there? And isn't that 43,850 or something, the contingency?
That was 42.
We eliminated that because we couldn't make it work in this year's budget. It's already gone.
Oh, I saw it still on there when I was looking in here.
It's in this year's budget, but it's not in next year's budget.
Okay. Well, I guess can't use that. See?
Forgot to bring that one up.
So that's all I have to say. I want to get it done, one way or another.
So, okay, let me get this straight, then. What weren't you, can you, can you narrow down, give us an idea what you weren't satisfied?
Well, I agree with everything up there. I guess I would like to kind of go over these other things, these other additional, one, two, three, four, five things, and maybe know how these are going to affect their departments.
You bet. Okay, okay. And we'll, we'll dive in on those too after we, after we run through. I'm more, I'll tell you, I'll be honest, I would like to have three officers looking at the budget. I really didn't think we could afford one this year. I was more toward leaning on putting it off, and I know, I know that would really, really kill the police department. But I'm thinking about the budget and moving forward and some of the additional changes that are going to come. It was a consensus of everybody that they didn't want to wait, that we wanted to jump in on an officer this year. If we do that, I still have to hold the line with no property tax increase. The only adjustment that I, that I had to make a change on that I just, I just can't seem, I can't budge on this one, on number three, is the fire overtime. I just can't touch that. I just feel like we've, we've handled them so much, and they're, they're so important to us, I, I just don't want to bother the fire department. Outside of that, I could, and I'm more like Becky, I would like to get a little taste of what these are actually going to do, because it's cause and effect. It's going to, somebody say, well, it's only five grand, but we've been tightening the belt up, whether people realize it or not, I know the departments do, and we've been tightening the belt up, and I know that most departments have been trying to come in lean already, so we definitely appreciate that. I guess I was a little bit longer than you, Bob, I apologize.
Let the record show.
I reserve the right as well. Councilman?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I've thought about this long and hard. I, I can't side with Bob on taking the number three recommendation by the city manager. I have, I don't think it'll do us any good to, to get into police and fire overtime or take anymore out of police equipment. If you remember last year, the chief cut his, cut his own equipment budget. We had the folks up here for the, for the bus transit, a discussion that we had just a few weeks ago, and I think we all pretty well decided that that wasn't really an option, that it was going to hurt a lot of folks. I can't see us taking anymore out of the, out of the library. I know they have a huge trust fund. Those are all private dollars, and the library never comes to us for capital improvements. They come for us, come to us for operating, and I think that's, I think we'd be doing them an injustice at this point. They, they haven't even absorbed the reductions that we've taken over the last two years. They're still working on that, and I would like to see them have at least another year before we, we give any serious consideration of making any, any more reductions than theirs. As an alternative, I'd let the council know that the sidewalk program and the demolition program was a program that was put together by council in the, in the early 2000s, it hasn't been around forever. Was there a need for it? Sure there was, but it, this entire budget is deferring maintenance, maintenance on streets. I mean, I think I mentioned before that even if we had 10 times what we're budgeting for streets and sidewalks, we're not going to, we're not going to touch what needs to be done.
That's true.
But it's, it's something we've got to do at this point. I mean, it's, I'm not dissing anybody on this, I'm just saying that it's, that that's the facts. I would like to see, truthfully, what I'd like to see is us add an additional $5,000, reduce the funding to the sidewalk program, an additional $5,000 for this year, same with the demolition program, and, and look at taking 15,000 from the self-insurance fund, this one-time shot, this one, one time, this one year. The, and then I, then I would propose that we keep that same direction for next month or for next year, but instead of taking from the, from the self-insurance fund, that we increase the demolition reduction by another $10,000, so we reduce it to 20,000, it'd be 30,000 instead of 50,000 in that fund, going into that fund, and that we look seriously at cutting council wages by a third. Take $10,000 out of, out of our own pockets to show we're serious about the problems that we have, that we have here. I know that's not popular, but a third opportunity, a third option would be increase or decrease the funding even further in the sidewalk replacement and the demolition program, and when, when we're on more stable ground, then, and we're bonding for streets, we bond for sidewalks and demolitions as well. I, we're, we're funding an awful lot of, an awful lot of fund balances right now and bringing them to, to an acceptable level at a fairly fast pace. And I think the council can be proud of that and, and appreciate the guidance that the city manager's given us. I think we can, if we're going to have to give up on streets, we might as well give up on sidewalks and demolition for, for now and address it when, when our entire financial picture is in, in better shape. But I still, I would, I would also say this, I wouldn't have a problem if we eliminated council salaries altogether.
I would.
It's, 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 I mean, it really doesn't amount to much, and I would rather see it going into a police officer's pocket than I would mine, so...
Councilman Davidson? We're getting there. We're getting there.
Thank you. I'm okay with a number of things. I have a couple of questions. Well, first of all, I want to, I forgot to mention this last time, at the regional planning meeting last week, last month, the per capita fee for members is going from 70 cents to 72 cents. What that means for us is about $513 more to the regional planning commission for the work that they do for us, so that's just for...
Thanks, thanks for the heads up on that one.
That's just for information. I agree with Councilman Scott. I, I don't have a problem cutting back on some of the sidewalk and the housing demolition program. And as far as the library is concerned, the 15,000, correct me if I'm wrong here, Jim, but isn't their budget supposed to increase 2%? And if we did 15, then they would still be increasing their budget by 1%?
That's correct. Their budget's going up a little over 30, right, right about 30,000, maybe a little bit over that, so that's about half of it, and it is a 2% increase.
So if we say, technically, we're not cutting the library, but we're just reducing the increase.
The increase.
And I know that's a popular term at the federal level, you say you're cutting, but what you're really cutting is the increase, you know, so how much, here's another question I have. What do we have going out toward the Bs?
We have 50,000 a year towards capital improvements. That's an indefinite through the life of our existing contract, which goes through, is it 2023? We have debt service payments...
45,000 for 26 this year.
In this year, and then that increases to 80,000 in the ensuing year and 90-some-thousand the following year. That, those debt payment streams go through 2023 timeframe. We pay the utilities, which is budgeted about 45,000, and that continues. We also have a, there's a maintenance fee, a 10-month payment structure that's been on there, it amounts to a little over 6,000, that's been a longstanding payment that's been done, that is not in this budget. Last year, they agreed to not receive that funding when we went through our budget issues for three years, so for '15, '16, '17, and then that starts back up again. But as you add those together, this next year is, what, 95?
I didn't...
140,000 in that neighborhood?
Where's our...
What we're putting towards them, and the majority of that's out of local option sales tax, part of that's out of hotel motel.
What's the oblig, what are we obligated to, to give the Bs?
140,000.
So the only...
We signed an agreement with them...
Was that on every, okay, okay.
It includes all those terms in it.
Even the utilities thing?
And that is, all of that's 2023.
Okay. All right, scratch that idea then. All right. I'm just trying to find places so I don't have to cut. I'm looking at the third option. I really don't want to increase property taxes. I'm okay with the first four that you had listed under item two. And I could go along with Councilman Scott and maybe increase the sidewalk and demolition a little bit. Now, am I reading this right? The sidewalk program is scheduled for $30,000 and the demo for $30,000.
But the demo does get other money from the sale of properties, doesn't it, Eric?
Right, that's where all, that's where.
And I could be okay with that, too, to increase those to $10,000.
Yeah, so on my list, I had, I think we all agreed on those top four, so that's 45. And then an additional $10,000 between the sidewalk and the demo, so that brings us to 65.
No, 55.
No, 55, I'm sorry, 55. And then if we do, the library gets us to 70. And I really have a question about eliminating transit service on Saturday, whether that's something we should be doing. I know when I was at work sessions, when you guys were talking about that, they said there's something like 38 or 39 people that ride the bus on Saturday. That doesn't seem like a huge number.
I don't think the number was quite that high, but still, it was, some of them were relying on to go to the hospital and some of them were.
Then the other thought I had to make up, the difference for me would be, instead of purchasing 11 new golf carts, we go to 10, save $4,300 or so. And that would get me right to my $75,000 by doing it that way.
Are we on the same page that we don't want to mess with, and I thanked him for, because I didn't want to mess with either overtime. But the overtimes or the police equipment, you guys want to leave that off the table?
Well, I guess I would still question that little bit for police equipment. I don't know. I think.
I think the chief indicated to me that he was willing to go for that, just be part of the.
The other reason I kind of offered that up for the equipment, that was going to be for the purchase of digital walkie-talkies. And hopefully, if the infrastructure gets put in place, then we'll be able to buy those through E911 funds. And that's my thought. So in FY '16, if all the tower work is done and we convert to this, we can start to buy all of our mobile units and our handhelds through E911 funds. And the other $2,500 for overtime is, we went through this process with the city manager. We increased the budget from 85 to 95, so that 25 would be coming off of 95 instead of 85. And I think last year, we were at 84 something. We were right there. So, I mean, if we could get fortunate enough to, in May, when we test, to maybe pick up a lateral transfer, I don't know if any will even apply, but if we were fortunate to have that happen, bingo, we got somebody in a couple of months right on staff, you know, which would really help the pressure on that overtime situation. So a little bit of that is pie in the sky, but at the same time, it could be reasonably done, too, so.
If you don't, which the chances are that you won't laterally get somebody that you're going to send them through all of that, what's the, how much is that going to change things up for you?
Well, it would change things up by timing of, you know, then you're looking 10, 12, 13 months before we can put that same person on the street versus two months. I mean, it is, and because of that is the timing of the academy. I mean, if you hire in May, the first academy date's not until October, or I mean August, excuse me, August. And then they're there for four months, and then once they come out of there, they're training for four or five months. So you can see that that timing is just critical. But if we were fortunate enough to get a lateral transfer that takes our test, they're certified, they're really ready to go other than what we require them to learn departmentally. So, I mean, with that thought in mind, that's kind of where the overtime thing was coming from. And we still are, we're going to get some funding through the Governor's Traffic Safety Alliance. So with that, we can do saturation patrols in certain areas and use some of that overtime funding as well. So just trying to balance that out. And I really felt like that all these other departments are stepping up for our department. It's the least I can do is try to find a couple other little ways to help this process as well.
So what you're saying is you're okay for giving up that $2,500?
Yeah, I think we can make it work. We'll do our absolute best. I'm really confident about the digital walkie-talkies. The overtime is, like I said, the city manager has already, you know, increased our overtime budget. So, I mean, we would absolutely do our best to stay under budget as we have every year, so.
Great. What's your equipment purchase, though, that you're reducing?
Digital walkie-talkies.
But what did we budget for that? Was that a one-time expense, or did we have that all five years of the CIP?
No, actually, when I originally budgeted those digital WTs, that would have been an ongoing expense. But I'm confident that 911 funding is going to cover that. And the GSTB as well, we can try to apply. We haven't ever been successful. But we can try to apply for the radars as well through Governor Traffic Safety, which they're not very expensive, but it all adds up.
You're talking about the digital WTs?
Yes.
We only have that one time, the radar, so you would put in there?
Yeah, I mean, we always apply every year to try to get that funded through Governor Traffic Safety. And it's kind of, it's not even every other year, but it seems like about every third year, we get fortunate enough to get a little bit of radar money from them.
And then were you talking about coordinating the PBTs, too, or no?
No, I mean, but what did I put in for? We only use a couple of those, yeah, 700 bucks.
But the other, the other, the digital WTs and radars amounts to $5,500? Over the five-year cycle, which is about $1,000 a year in perspective, where he's putting that?
Thank you, Jim.
No, thank you.
So if I could summarize.
We don't need to. I think I've got it totaled up, too.
If we take the top, if we go for this number two, that's our $45,000 to start from there. Then what we need to add, if we did 15 from the library, 15, or 25, 25, that's $5,000 from the police department. Add another five from the demo and sidewalk, then that would get us to our $75,000.
Okay, well, I have a different thing.
Unless you're saying that we can't do that equipment because it's not outgoing.
You can do your equipment, but it's only going to be $1,000 a year, so use it at $1,000.
What equipment are you talking about?
PD equipment.
That's down here, the 25.
Right.
Well, I had, okay, if you increase the sidewalk and the demolition to 10, then that makes the top area up here $55,000, right? And then if we leave the police equipment and the police overtime, that adds another five. So that brings you to $60,000. And then the golf carts, $4,300, so we're at 64.3.
Is that one time, or is that one per year that you're talking about? And Eric, I don't know what you're.
I think it showed on the capital fund that there was, I think, 11, did we say, Eric?
11 for this coming this fiscal year.
You're not buying 11 a year.
So that's a one-time deal? Or are you doing one?
There's some shown in 18, 19, but not in 17.
And not in 20.
Yeah.
So are you eliminating one for each cycle?
That would be my suggestion.
And there's three cycles that fit within this? So you have 13, 5, which averages out at $2,500? 20, 2700.
Oh, what are you talking, you still?
I don't, I'm not dedicated to that. I'm not saying we have to do that, but I'm just suggesting.
Mayor Pro Temp, what do you?
Well, okay, so forget the golf cart thing because that's not really going to, it's not really going to.
Well, that's more of a savings than what the PD equipment is. PD is only $1,000 a year.
But why do you have down here, then, $2,500?
I had it based off of what the figure that Doug said, but the items that are on the CIP plan don't add to that, which is why I was asking.
So you couldn't have come up with 75 with that either?
Not with that, no. Not without him cutting something else off that CIP list.
Okay, so, all right, everything up here, adding five to these, that added up to 55. Okay, now, that's going to kind of.
Still think you need to clip that.
Okay, so that kind of fouls me up here, then. You don't know what that all adds, the police? Why, if we take the police overtime and?
If you do, what I'm hearing, auditorium at 25, IT at 5, the transit part-time wages at 5, sidewalk at 10, demo 10, PD OT overtime at $2,500, PD equipment $1,000, golf cart averaging out at $2,700, that gets you the $61,200.
Okay, you took, all right, I'm kind of still confused here on what we had.
You're there, you're there.
Can you go over that again because?
Auditorium, $25,000, IT at 5, transit part-time wages at 5, sidewalk fund $10,000, demo $10,000, PD overtime $2,500, PD equipment $1,000, golf cart $2,700.
And then you're aware with that?
At 61,200.
And then can we take 10 out of the self-insured fund? And we are right now at $225,507 in there. And I know we want to get to $400,000, but we're still going to be pretty close to that. I guess, you know, the problem I have, the reason I want a police officer, I mean, I'm a single person, and I think about if something happened and how I feel living alone, I want to know that a policeman shows up there. And I know we have a goal to hit $400,000 there, but if we're short there by $25,000 and something happens, we can borrow that money, but if we're short a police officer, when we need a police officer, then, you know, I just feel like.
Go with it, I'm with you.
I just feel like that isn't going to kill us to be off that amount on our goal. It may take six months longer, but.
But if you put in the $15,000 for the library, then you've got your number right there.
On the library, again, if you take, you may be reducing the increase by 1%, but everybody else is being increased by the 2%. And it's because there's going to be salaries, and I don't know how you're going to cover that 2% salary increase or 2.25% salary increase that the city manager has planned in this budget. And that's going to, they're already reducing services. And if we're basing this thought on the fact that they have a large trust fund, that they use that trust fund interest to purchase capital improvements for the library itself, and we take that mentality and we set that precedent, the next one we're going to attack is the Dave Wittenberg Policing Foundation. And when they're in the same position and have the same kind of balance, we set the precedent. We're going to say, okay, let's operate the police department off those, off that huge fund that people have donated to the police department, to the policing foundation, which is a private foundation, same as the library foundation, which the library has no control over, we have no control over. I mean, they request capital improvements, and it's the board that makes the decision on whether they want to contribute to that. And I'd also point out that the sidewalk program is doubling in funding. The demolition program is going up by 40% from what it's been. It may be back, the demolition program may be back to a historic same, but it's from what it's been the last few years. I think in a time when we're tightening our belt and to do the least amount of damage to employees, departments, operations of departments, and to taxpayers, that reducing the funding and putting it into the police department where we already know that the tax levy that we're going to levy is going to cover that, then we're there. I mean, we don't, I don't, I see some years where we have carryover in the sidewalk program.
I think we all agree with that, to increase the, or to decrease.
I'm talking covering the $30,000 that we're short.
With the sidewalk program?
From the sidewalk and demolition program in the second and subsequent years because we're increasing from 15 to 30 and from 20 to 50 in the, because we're going from 20 to 40 to 50. Wait a minute.
Well, I tell you, I could do away with the sidewalk program all to replace it because I think it's ineffective. I just don't think people use it. It's so many, it's so much per foot, and I think they want a program that will pay for it. Because it seems like if they go for that, then, you know, they either have the money to do the sidewalks or they don't.
I think you hit on something that I could go for. I've just got, and if we did that, then get our other, our next, our other $30,000 out of those two programs.
I think when the sidewalk program was set up, I think we were rolling then. Now, I'm not 100% positive, but it almost looks like a program that we've got extra money, so how can we, you know, how can we apply this to?
That was the secret. We had extra money back then.
Right, and so I'm saying now that there's not, I mean, and, you know, I definitely have to agree with Becky. I don't, I really don't think it's all that effective. I don't know how much it's been taken advantage of. So maybe that is something that needs to be completely wiped off and just revisited as we get to that, as we get to that position. I also want to say this. I think, Tim, you said that do the most with the less damage. I still think we need to clip the self-insurance a little bit. That's not going to do that much damage. I'm not saying a lot. I'm just saying just a little, that it's really not going to be missed that much. But I think we could take $10,000 from there. And I also have to say this, too, because Ron is here, I want to say this. When I first got on the council, one of the biggest things that everybody said, and one of the biggest things that I looked at, was the library budget because everybody said it was high. And I'll be honest with you, I still kind of do a little bit when I'm looking at comparisons of departments and when we're saying, we got to trim to get a police officer, a police officer on. With that being said, never have I looked at their, I'm not looking at what they've got in the, to me, that's irrelevant. That has nothing to do with me. I'm just looking at what we're paying out annually to the library. And I don't want to bust them up, but I really didn't have a problem with the $15,000.
But it sounds like we have a solution, if you're willing to do with the sidewalk and the demo, then there's your $30,000. So you've got to cover it then.
We're still short in the first year, this year.
Take the self-insured fund money?
I really have a problem doing that. I really.
What are you increasing, the sidewalk and the demo?
How much do we have?
Well, I have, I've increased it to 5, but how, you want to go higher than that?
They're $30,000 each, right?
How much do we have in both of?
Oh, the sidewalk has $30,000 a year, budgeted. And the demo has $30,000 this year and then $50,000 in the out years.
We could take 40, we could.
10, 15, and 15.
I just say, let's do away with the sidewalk replacement. I just don't think it's effective.
I agree.
But I'd rather do away with that and keep the demolition fund because I think the demolition fund does.
Eric, what kind of response do we get on the sidewalk program?
It varies year to year, but it's something that it makes or breaks some people whether they do it or not. They call, and every year we get calls after the budget is sidewalk program in because that's going to determine if they want to do it or not. And then, I guess, the priority, if we're looking to force replacement or require replacement or something like that, is there, that's had been talked about in the past as an incentive to do that. But we do have a lot of sidewalks that people apply for. Some years, it's less than what we get. Some years, it's more than what we get.
And could you say what the sidewalk replacement amount is for application?
It's gone up over the years. I think it's $8 a running foot for the replacement, which covers, if you have a contract to do it, maybe a quarter of the cost, a third of the cost, if that.
Sounds to me like the most pain-free way to do this because it doesn't impact departments.
Well, where are we at, though? Because I'm at, I could totally just walk away from the sidewalk replacement right now. Do you guys want to just trim it, or?
Walk away from it.
That's $30,000 a year that we could free up that, you know, are we really utilizing?
I mean, I could see bringing it back sometime when we have money. I mean, I could see bringing it back sometime when we have money, but, you know.
If you do that, then, if you take item two, and then that thirty thousand dollars, there's your seventy-five.
Keep demo at, just at a five thousand cut. Oh, wait, no.
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't quite get it, because-
We're still bumping up demo.
We'd be five thousand dollars short, because we already cut the five thousand dollars in there.
Yeah, we're, we're still going, going to bump up demo five grand, bump it up to ten, right? And then we're, we're there.
That would be a-
We're over there, but I think we can put the police overtime and equipment back.
Yeah.
So, do the demo ten thousand, cut?
I'm saying, leave the overtime equipment, leave that, leave the bottom three alone. We can, we can cover that, right? And what, if we're short-
Take the police equipment, overtime off that.
And the golf cart.
Take that all off.
Yeah. There's your seventy-five thousand.
I like it. And we're not raising any taxes.
Right.
Bishop, what do you think?
I'm fine.
Mr. Scott?
I'm good with it. I still think we can take thirty thousand out of the council's pocket.
I oppose that.
I'm glad you brought that back up, because I want to say something. I want to say something out there, since you brought it up.
I'm waiting about your old-
I am. Oh, no, I would beat you up. I'm just going to tell you that I, I am totally against that. There's no way, there's no way.
I second that.
There's just too much that you have to do. That, that wouldn't be fair for the future people that are coming on here to be spending money to do something for the city, you know, just in gas money. Well, praise the Lord, gas is down. But, no, I would be, and I'm not saying, because I'm on here, I'm saying, for the future council, no way, no way. I'm not saying giving out raises, but I, I couldn't take any money, that's a-
Let's ask Jim, what, how do you see it?
This is fine. You've come up with a solution that I think doesn't, I mean, it puts some limitations in some areas, especially sidewalk. But I think that you're, you're not compromising anything with what you're doing. And you're, I mean, it's all part of trying to find out where's your level of prioritization.
My question is, is seventy-five thousand the right number?
I don't think it-
It's, it's close. And stuff, when you hire, when we bring someone on, if they're coming in as, with family coverage, are they right at seventy-five?
Yes, or a little under, yeah. We just, we rounded up.
The majority of times when we're bringing someone on, odds on they're coming in as single, so they're a ten thousand under, but you just can't bank on that.
But if we took an extra ten thousand out of the self-insurance, we're there with no worries.
He's saying ten thousand less.
Yeah, taking ten thousand less, but-
No, I'm, he's saying, if a single person comes on, it's sixty-five thousand.
No, yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. I'm saying-
What Jim's getting at, though, is that, as you, when you're doing this over a long period of time, wages and increases in employee costs is going to drive that number higher. Seventy-five covers with the family. It has adequate cushion, cushion well, well above the cushion that you need for a single. And if you average it out, I think you're coming out okay.
Okay. That's all I want to know.
I'm happy. I feel fine with that.
Okay.
Full pie, Joe. We're going to have bubble gum now. If everybody's satisfied?
Need anymore?
I don't think so. We can make these changes in our numbers, and then we'll upload it back to Open Gov, so that it reflects it, and we can move forward.
Before we go, I'm going to ask you guys one more time. Are you sure you don't want to just go ahead and trim ten grand, because we just don't know about-
I am positive I don't, because who, who's our insurance company after our self-insurance?
What's that?
Who's the insurance company after our self-insurance program?
Our stop loss?
Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
Who is that through?
I think Midwest Casualty.
Do we get that through Two Rivers?
Yes.
And how do they look at it, that we don't have our self-insurance fund?
You know, we've asked them, what's the adequate number to have in here? And we've never gotten a really, really an answer. And I, and I think that every time we've asked that, he has a little bit of a cringe factor to him. I mean, when your stop loss on an individual claim is four hundred thousand, when we sit with two hundred thousand in there, you have the potential to have yourself a shortfall.
See, to me, that just does not make sense, to be putting yourself in jeopardy.
To me, if it was fifty grand, it wouldn't make sense. But for ten, um-
And I worry about putting people in jeopardy and not having a policeman, but-
But I think that we solve the problem, so.
But it, we're at two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, I think, in there now. And that's why, but the good thing about it, if we don't cut, take any there, I think we should remember that that's there, because someday, when we get closer to four hundred, that's going to free up some money every year, then.
Our, our goal is, is that that should happen. What we've done, though, over the five-year budget cycle, we have no increases in that. We have it just fixed, it's three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand needs to be brought in each year. As time goes on, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand does not cover the same thing that it does now. And as that fund gets built up, we'll have to see where we, where we stand.
What our new line's going to be.
It would be nice to be, to find that we can make a new line that's more like three-hundred-thousand for that overall figure. But until we're there, we're not there.
Where, where does that, where do those funds come from? Is it all general fund, or is it out of?
No, about-
I can pull this up.
Two-thirds of that comes out of the general fund. The remainder of that, you have a percentage breakdown.
I don't have the percentage, but you can see, out of the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand comes out of the general fund. This is the breakdown of the funds, where it gets allocated by the wages. So, we were doing, how much would we have to cut to get about twenty-five thousand for the general fund? And we'd have to cut forty thousand off that self-insurance fund, to get a approximately twenty-five thousand-dollar savings to the general fund.
Okay.
So it's not dollar for dollar going into the general fund, when you cut self-insurance. I think we've got it. For now, I think we're fine.
Okay. Point guard, do you have anything you want to add before we get to any closings?
No, I'm just happy if you get, if you're, if you're all satisfied and we can move forward. This is, this is the biggest part of the year, really, that sets the framework for how we move forward for the, the next budget cycle. And it just really gives a, it gives us a framework for operations to continue on. So we're happy to see that happen. I know PD's happy to see that extra officer to be, to fill that, that gap. So this, that's a, a big deal.
I think we have a lot of citizens that are happy to have an extra officer.
Council members, you guys have anything in, in closing?
I do want to thank you folks. I appreciate it. I appreciate that we're not going to raise taxes. But, thank you.
Yeah, I do, too. And I, I appreciate everybody's input here. I think that Tim worked on it, and you've worked on, we all kind of, we all came to consensus. Appreciate that.
I want to personally thank all the departments and the department heads. We've been running all over you guys, reckless, and I know it has not been fun. And it's not, I know it wasn't my intention to make it uncomfortable for department heads, and, you know, shake things up, you know, that's, it's not the way you do things, and that's not the intent. We're going to get through this tough patch, and when we do, we're going to, we're going to see the fruits of our labor. But right now, we still are trying to stick to the, to stick to the script. So bear with us and be patient. We're, we're moving in the right direction.
Amen. Pardon me.
There's nothing else?
Was that all we were doing tonight?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.